Please call the roll.
Mr. Wyler. Mr. Hattie?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
President, so we have more than the quorum, so we're ready to do the people's business. First item on the agenda is citizens' comments and, you know, the policy we have. Any citizen can address us during the work session. I hope you stay within five minutes. Do we have any citizen who wants to address the commission this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the discussion of the tentative agenda. Mr. City Manager.
You keep the gavel, Mayor.
Okay.
I just need the microphone. I just need the bullet poker.
Yeah, okay buddy.
We have the tentative agenda in front of you. It's a tentative sewer agenda.
Yeah.
As much as I'm armed.
I think, we did get your downtown resolution on there, but the rest of it's sewer and a couple of personnel things. If anyone has any comments or questions?
I just have a comment. It's gonna be, I'm assuming this is Nikki Hughes who is retiring. It's gonna be a significant loss for our Parks and Rec Department to have such a knowledgeable person retire, but certainly wishing the best, that's for sure. He's devoted a lot of time and effort and energy to the city and has done a lot of good work, so.
Well, I think he's going out with a bang this weekend.
Yeah.
With the days of night celebration.
I thought you were gonna talk about the cannon.
Okay.
Everybody's okay with the agenda then?
Yep.
Okay, next is the City Manager reports. The staff's comments.
All right, been busy a couple of weeks. I've had quite a few meetings and a lot of them are meetings with people over some of these items that we're gonna be discussing on the agenda, but a couple of meetings of note. Some have been reported in the newspaper, the KCDC meeting, they had some very good prospects, but they also reported a clean audit, so really the auditor said the best thing that could happen is to sell some land and they're working hard to do that, so everything's going well. We've had a meeting with the plant board, they did an audit of the streetlights in the city and the way that they build the different types of streetlights and they advised us that our electric bill is probably gonna go up $25,000 next year. So, that's worst-case scenario, but we're working with them on it and we'll be able to go through the budget and make accounts for that. But they're gonna provide us with a GIS map of all the streetlights that we've had installed over the years, so, you know, maybe we can, with Public Works and with Planning and Zoning, determine which ones-
Are the biggest offenders.
Are the biggest offenders, which ones are needed, not needed, or whatever. I don't know if it'll make that much difference, but it's something we probably should look at. We did have kinda one significant meeting with some of the Crestwood neighbors. We've had some drainage issues out there and some proposed plans to relieve some of that. We're beginning to get some easements signed and then there was an insurance claim that was discussed and I think we're on the way to getting that settled. Had the city's adjuster out there and getting the information that they need so we can get that taken care of, so that's moving forward and it's real positive. As far as City Manager report, that's about it. Department head reports, let's start with, Robert, you have anything on planning and zoning?
No, sir.
Major Deaton, you have anything for Police Department?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of quick things. I wanted to report that this last time we told you that on September 29th, we were gonna hold our 12th session of medication disposal drug take-back session and that was in cooperation with the United States Drug Enforcement Administration and the County Health Department and it was quite successful. We retrieved 197.5 pounds of drugs and medication which amounted to 89,369 tablets, capsules, and medication doses, which made the total for this program over 400,000 tablets and capsules of medication which we disposed of and was not put back into the water system and was not left to be abused or misused or perhaps a catalyst for another crime. And also on Wednesday, October 31st, Halloween, during the hours of trick-or-treat between 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., once again our annual Frankfurt Police Department Operation Safe Treat will be conducted at the Public Safety Building where we distribute treats to children in reflective Halloween bags with Halloween safety tips. So that will be once again from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Wednesday, the 31st.
Thank you, Mr. Hackmark.
I would like to get permission to add two bid awards to the October meeting. One is for, we had a transit roof bid opening and we got one bid in, and so we're waiting to hear from the state whether we have to re-advertise to get more, see if we can get some more vendors to bid on that or if one's gonna be sufficient or not. And the second one is for the East Frankfurt Pool demolition. October 16th, we're doing a bid award or a bid opening for that where a contractor would come into town and grind up the concrete and fill in the pool, so we'll get a bid on that coming this month to put on the agenda. Also, I'd like to get permission to order two appraisals. One piece of property is on East Main Street. We have a request from a resident who would like to buy a city lot and so to get an idea what the value is, we would like to get permission to get an appraisal down on that lot and then we'll bring that back to you. And the second is a piece of property, we need a place to dump rock, dirt, and film material since we don't take it out to the carpenter farm anymore. There's possibly a piece of property that would work and we would like to get an appraised value on that and bring that back for you all to consider purchasing. An update on Schinkel Lane. I think at this point, I talked to interim City Manager Will Hoyt about maybe postponing that project until the spring. Getting, we're getting into the cold weather season and with all the traffic on that street, if it gets cold, we had a project two years ago when the weather dipped down, we had Broadway Hill shut down until March or April, so maybe the best at this point, just to wait till the springtime when we have better weather and we can deal with the traffic and not be a nuisance to the traveling public. Last thing is, last Friday, there was an article in the newspaper about Louisville Hill bike lanes and our plan was to have a public meeting next Monday and get public input. We're already getting emails and phone calls today from last Friday's article and then get a chance to hear from the public and then report back to you all the following commission meeting and make a decision whether we write a letter to the state requesting the change or to keep it as is. So, that's kind of our plan for that.
What time does that begin?
We were talking 12:30 on Monday.
And the thing about the 12:30 time, depending on whether the board wants to have a 12:30 meeting or not, you could have one and make this part of it and it could be a part of a public hearing or it could just be a standalone public hearing if you have no issue that you wanna bring up.
There's kind of a week between the work session and the regular meeting to get some input, to report back to the board of what we're hearing, 'cause there's, we're hearing both sides, if some people are for and some people are against.
Right.
I believe that includes my report.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Regarding the city lots, how many properties does the city own and is there already a piece of property that the city owns that we could use versus trying to get in, buy something with an appraisal? Can we maybe get a look at what properties the city owns? 'Cause I'm sure that not all of us really know what we really own, do we?
Right. I know Planning and Zoning maintains a list. Mr. Mueller puts out a spreadsheet. I have one over at the police station, but I don't have it in electronic format, we'll have to get that, but yeah, there is an inventory of city properties and most of them are contained within the city limits, flood buyout properties or, you know, city buildings, things like that. But be glad to get your list of city properties.
Thanks.
And could I follow up on that too?
Yes, sir.
Do we just fill the carpenter farm up? Is that what happened?
The carpenter farm, we did, and the city used that for several years to dump rock and brick and that material. Problem is when you dump and it's not monitored and not put in compacted, if you have a future use of that property-
Right.
-it becomes a concern. You have to get geotechnical involved to make sure that if you build a building, that it doesn't settle.
Right.
And so I guess the concern is, there's two concerns with the carpenter farm. There's not an all-weather road to the very back of the farm for our trucks to drive on 'cause it's gonna be in the wintertime, so that's gonna be a big expense to put a hard surface drive to the back of the farm to dump on. And second, you just, we don't know today what the best and highest use of that property's gonna be, so just to blindly dump material on that property-
Sure.
-might 10 years from now be a bad decision, so what our thought was maybe to buy a piece of property close to town that its highest and best use is dumping material on it and get a permit so that we don't have erosion issues with that, so just kinda get an idea of what that value might be and bring that back to you for consideration.
Right.
Problem, a lot of the properties that the city owns is along creeks and rivers and to dump is probably not the best use for that property in a flood plain.
Do you maybe have an estimate too of what it would cost to build a hard surface?
For a road?
For the carpenter farm in comparison to what the price of property, buying a piece of property would be?
We could take a look at that, sure.
I'm glad to see Bill sauntering up, 'cause my next question was gonna be for him. Although I guess your facilities being by the river might not work, but do you not have space out there for this sort of thing?
I've saved all these guys.
Yeah.
And our other option is to take it to the landfill, which is an expensive option, but it's compliance with our regulations, so we would rather find something compliant and cost-effective.
Sure.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Mr. Stell?
Since Mr. Hackmark deleted the sewer agenda, I'd like to add two more items to get back up to where we were. I've got an agreement with Custom Data Processing, they have a private sewer out there, they're gonna do some work and this basically is an agreement between us and them. It said should they ever wanna subdivide their property, that that private sewer will be brought up to our standards before they subdivide the property, so it's kind of a protection for us, so we'd like to add that to the agenda. The second item, I will leave to your discretion. We have finished discussions and negotiations with URS for Phase Two of the Stormwater Utility. I can add that to this month's agenda for approval or I can defer it to November, your choice. It'd be an amendment to their contract.
I'm frankly fine either way. This month's bound for me.
Okay. I will add them both and thank you very much.
Wilson, do you have anything?
We have a new website that we have to turn on on Wednesday. Let's look at our home page. The whole purpose for this new website is to have many editors, you know, the departments are responsible for editing their pages now as well as content of their department pages. So basically, the difference between the old and the new is the, we have so many editors. The current website we have can be done and edited only by one person, so if you want to have your own pages there, you can. What we have to do is create a username and password for you. And also, there is a portion here where if the public wants to make a comment, all they have to do is request for username and password. And there is a link there that if they read something and if they wanna make a comment, they can request for username and password, so we know who are making comments. This website actually is very dynamic. If you request for change, it can be done right away, you know, and if you have username and password, you can do it yourself anytime, you know. I mean, the response is a bit faster.
That's great.
So, on Wednesday, we were thinking of switching the domain out to this. Currently, you can access it if you know the URL, which is www3. If you type that, www3.frankford.gov, it will go to the page. But on Wednesday, we will switch it to the main one, which is just www or the main city website.
Thanks, Wilson.
This is great.
Yeah, good. Looks really nice.
I don't see it on this page, but each commissioner has an area where they can maintain a blog or-
Yes, that announcement actually is actually a blog. Mike, who designed the website, he just replaced it to Word Announcement, you know, you can actually change the headings for that. Some of that, actually the template for that came from Open Public, the original that you all saw on the presentation before. And Mike just pulled that template and just modified it to our purpose.
Do the commissioners need an edit privilege for that?
Yeah, they can. We actually have a username and password there now that we created. We just need to give you the password if you want to edit your own pages.
Great.
Just let us know and we will activate it.
Absolutely. And I'll, because this has been viewable for a little while at www3, so I snuck a peek at it and it's, you see these blue dots right here? There's this image at the top and the text with it-
It changes.
-constantly changes and does a really good job of promoting Frankfurt, not just as a government, but as a city-
Yes.
-and the attractions we have here and it's really, it's really lovely and I found it to be nice and navigable. Of course, the fact, as was mentioned, that it's based on open source software that we take advantage of, of software that I don't have to pay for to create the site, this is top-notch and I really appreciate the fact that folks can comment on it because the purpose of a website is not just to give the public access to more information. A really good website can let that be a two-way street where we actually give the public more opportunities to give feedback to their local government, so this is, I think this is a really big deal.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. McCray? Welcome to the party.
Good afternoon. I just have a couple of things. The stream restoration project and penitentiary branch, hopefully they'll be done within seven to 10 days. If you haven't been over, we call it the wetlands, but the streams, penitentiary, if you haven't been over, sometime you oughta go over and look. They've really done a nice job of restructuring the stream and finishing the stream, they've got a lot of people over there. And hopefully at that time, they will move over into the wet, I mean, the cold spring and they'll start at the spring and head and work their way back. So, they are ahead of schedule and everything, so that's good news. One other thing, we had a mud run last weekend at the Capitol Park, which was highly successful. Seventy-nine percent of the participants were out-of-town participants, so I don't know about, it's one of the things, I told you, I do think tourism is a vital part of this department, bringing people into Frankfurt, so we were real happy with the mud run. It went real well. And the last thing, Commissioner Turner mentioned, Nikki is retiring and we will miss Nikki and this weekend, if you're out Saturday or Sunday, come to Cold Spring on top of the hill, you'll have to park at Peaks Mill School and we'll shuttle you over with the transit buses, but he's been wanting to do this medieval festival for many years and we finally got Rob's approval, so.
Just no jousting, right?
No jousting.
No live jousting, but if you're into history, it'll be very interesting. Friday is a school day, we've got some school buses coming Friday, but Saturday or Sunday, come on out and walk around and enjoy it, it'll be, you'll learn a little bit, so.
Do you still have fighting with the maces?
Do I?
Can you fight with the maces?
Yes. But it's not real jousting, it's, you know, it's just, but these people do it for a living, that's, I always call it like a, you know, it's a reenactor, everybody's into recreation, but it'll be really interesting. I think it'll be very, you learn a lot about history and, so we're excited about it and looking forward to it. And hopefully they'll be done with the slate roof this weekend also on the shelter at Cold Spring.
Great.
Thank you.
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
What's the new name of the park up on top of the hill?
It's the Archery Center, Cold Spring Park.
I had, I've heard at least three people, was it in the paper Sunday?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I've had at least three people tell me they really thought that was a good name and I don't know who brought it up, but.
Well, it's a combination. That was a staff. We won't say the staff, not me or Jim, it was the staff that came up with the name, but yeah, we're real excited about the park up there. It's a really great place to come and bring your dog and walk. We've had a lot of people bring their kids up there, teach them how to ride their bicycle 'cause it's real sleazy up there, so.
Yeah.
We're just looking for good things up there. We gotta work out somewhere on water, we may have to somehow get with the plant board, but that's the really only thing we need up there is water. We gotta figure out some way to get water up there.
Yeah. And I've heard many great things about that too up there. Great, it's another great thing to have in the city and your department. Thank you.
Rebecca, do you have anything for us? Angie?
Finance?
Randy? I'm sorry, Wally. Just a couple of quick things. I'd like permission to add to the agenda and I hope that I'll have it ready for this month. It's possible that we'll continue negotiating and the contract may stretch out with the city attorney, working with the vendors. One's for our third-party administrator. The brokers did put our third-party administration out and got, I don't know whether to use the word bid or got proposals from United, Anthem, and Humana and renewal bid from Health First, which we probably call, Health First bought out Wells Fargo January 1st. And so, they've brought a lot of new things in that Wells Fargo wasn't doing. Norma's report to me was that none of the other vendors really gave us any prices any better and she thought that the best thing would be to stick with the current TPA, but we did get a three-year price guarantee out of them, which is pretty unheard of up there. Two is the most that we've ever gotten before, so we got a three-year price lock and we'd like to put that on the agenda to renew their contract. The other thing is-
Is that at price or rate?
It is, most of the administrative activities they do is per employee, per month-
Okay.
And there are some flat prices involved in it as well. It's a pretty substantial contract. The other thing I'd like to add would be vision and dental and, you know, we talked in another meetings about needing to improve the vision plan and we put it out there and we've got what we think is gonna be a really great improvement to our benefits package this time using Anthem. Health Smart and our current vendor and two other vendors put in proposals for the vision plan. I think it's something that's really gonna make employees, give them something they can use. It's gonna cost us a little more, but we think we can cover it within the budget. We're gonna move the pharmacy benefit management from an external vendor inside the TPA and we think that the efficiencies we gain there will more than offset the cost of the vision plan. And I'd like to get it on the agenda for approval, assuming we get all the contracts worked out.
Whenever you get some information, can you email it to us? I mean, I would like to see it whenever.
The vision plan?
Any of it.
Okay. If that's okay, all right, and then I think I'm back up later to talk about a compliance issue with the health plan. Is that part of the agenda in a little while? Yeah, I'll save that for later.
Just like to ask for permission to add two items to the agenda. We have bids out on replacing two ambulances and we'll have those bid openings next week, so I'd like to get those on the October agenda with your permission. That contract award and the second item would be to surplus our radios, both portables and mobile radios, if we get all the inventory complete and all the deprogramming that we have to do before we let them go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda has to do with old business and, as mentioned, the transit system updating.
Well, this was an agenda request from one of the commissioners, so.
You wanted to just put this-
I requested it and thanks for the support to have it added. My question is, everyone knows the transit system and it's on, that we're looking for a new, I guess, director of it, but my question has more to do with the trolley and it's regarding, per the grant, Rebecca, you probably have the answer to this, but per the grant, what is it that the trolley can be used for? 'Cause it seems that it's mostly kinda used similar to a bus route, but, you know, I see all these other cities that do things with their trolley and I just didn't know if we were limited in this city of what we can and cannot do with the trolley.
Right now, we're limited to use it for what we put in our most recent grant-
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. Which is the downtown route and any shuttles that are pre-approved by the state.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that we can't request to have that changed. It can basically go anywhere within the city limits and we can request it anytime that our current program be changed, but we just need direction on how you want it to be changed.
I just had an idea, it might be a little late this year, but maybe next year, that with the month October, and I know that Mr. Hatter's tours get pretty booked, but we have Buffalo Trace that does some tours, the Liberty Hall, we have Fort Hill, and with Russ Hatter, I thought it'd be a good idea that with the tourism aspect, at least for the month of October, that we could promote like a haunted trolley ride that would bring people into town and we could have different stops.
Like at Liberty Hall or something?
Like at Liberty Hall, go to Buffalo Trace and that people could do different stops. It's just-
And that's doable, again, we just have to ask permission from the state to do any of that, so.
Okay.
Right, most of those are not a deviation from their original route, so that would be something that would probably be likely. We had, in addition to discussions about the trolley, we have had some discussions with some people from downtown that maybe feel like the trolley is underutilized as an economic development tool, but, you know, I've talked to the driver and looked at types of people that come to town that ride the trolley, you know, they're kinda people looking for information, where to go, what do I do? But we're looking, you know, we mothball the trolley in the wintertime-
Right.
So, we're looking at maybe a proposal to maybe get some of these far-reaching state offices to come downtown for lunch.
Right.
The problem right now is you can't guarantee that that circuit can be done in an hour.
Right.
So, you know, and once again, that has to be approved by the state, but we have to have a proper request, so we're working on that and have been in discussions about that.
Anything else to add to that?
I suppose so. I mean, I hate to, I hate to have to bring this up. But I suppose this is the time to. I was pretty disappointed to see that local prosecutors are choosing not to pursue charges against our former transit head. We, you know, as we all know and has, has been reported in the paper, a former transit head was investigated for, well, taking a bunch of city property home and for misusing a city card. So, you know, staff conducted an investigation, uncovered pretty cut and dried evidence, reclaimed a bunch of the stolen property. She resigned and forfeited some accumulated pay. And I know that the staff report we were given indicated a feeling that no further charges should be pursued. We discussed this as a commission and gave, I thought, a pretty clear direction that, that we did not want to request of prosecutors that they not pursue charges. And we debated whether or not we wanted to ask them to throw the book at her and came to the conclusion that we shouldn't trust the prosecutor from one way or the other. We trust them to do their jobs. We should just turn the evidence over and communicate that we, we trust their judgment. Because to my understanding, that's the way we handle, you know, most criminal activity that our police department uncovers and turns over to the prosecutor's office. We uncover the evidence, we turn it over, they decide whether or not to pursue a case. And it's not really, for our discussion, we felt it wasn't really our place to even weigh in on the matter. And talking with the Commonwealth attorney, because I was, I was just curious to know why he wasn't pursuing charges. And, you know, he's a, a really good guy. And I do have a lot of respect for him. And I'm not surprised that he's obviously taken full responsibility for that decision not to prosecute. But he did indicate that in conversation with city officers that he got the impression that we didn't want to, that we kind of wanted the matter to drop and didn't want charges to be pursued. My understanding is that the evidence hasn't been, which is obviously contrary to the directions we gave. If it's, and it could easily be a miscommunication. I absolutely accept that. So, I'm not trying to, not trying to make ways or cause trouble here. But I'm hoping that we could either clarify the, our position on this or just request that the evidence be submitted to the county attorney's office. So that they can make a determination.
Well, if I can weigh in on this just a second, you know. Anything I said in the paper does not present, or prevent us from presenting that on. I mean, these, you know, there's, there's no statute limitations on a felony. And, you know, if, if the board would like me to, I wasn't, I wasn't privy to the information in the closed meeting.
Sure.
So, you know, if the board would like me to gather the evidence and present it to Mr. Cleveland, and, you know, we can kick that can on down the road.
And I do want to make it clear, Chief, I don't, I don't fault you for anything you said in the paper. I know that there's been a transition and any miscommunication.
Let's wrap it up and let's move on.
Sure. I will say that I am concerned about the overall message we send. I mean, I think that if, if we leave this meeting today and lock up City Hall, and somebody breaks in and steals a couple of computers and some furniture and gets a city card and buys some items for their family or something, and they get caught, I think we would all expect them to be prosecuted. And I'm just concerned that if we indirectly send the message that our employees can do that and not be charged, I just think that sends a dangerous message.
Can I please? I, I think from our end, what we want to do is make sure that our, at least from City Hall aspect, that we're doing our due diligence in the matter. And I think it would probably be smart for us to go ahead and provide that evidence to the Commonwealth's attorney. And then, you know, then the ball's in the Commonwealth attorney's court at that point. And he has all the evidence that he needs. And it becomes his role and his job to put that case together and determine if he's got a strong enough case to take it forward to judge. So, I, I think in terms of doing our due diligence, yeah, I think, you know, the message that we send to the public, that we're good stewards of their tax dollars and hold people accountable for that, I think it would be smart just to go ahead and do that if possible.
Right.
Lobby replay.
And it's a.
That's fine, Will. I'll instruct Major Deaton to have the detective present the case to the Commonwealth attorney then.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay.
I want to hear you guys say that, too. I have one more thing in regard to the transit while we're on the topic. I guess, Jeff, is there, I know I've talked to you, but just for public record, you guys are looking to fill out a position in a timeline, if there is one, or financially, yes?
We're just exploring our options at this point. We have a foreman that's acting as a superintendent right now and kind of getting their feet wet in the position to see. But as far as services go, they're going, going forward with no interruptions. And we're just kind of getting a feel for in-house versus out, going outside before we post.
Right. And I guess the only thing I would like to see, and I don't know if the rest of the commission would agree, but while having new direction, just maybe trying to get in touch with the employees who are in the department, just seeing what they, what they think would make the system better and more functional for the transit system in general. And see if they have any ideas of how to improve the service. I know, at my job, I call for the bus a couple of times a day for, for patients, for the bus to come pick them up. And the bus does what it can, you know, to run its system and to call. But maybe we need to think about drop-offs, new drop-off points. If the hospital does need to be a drop-off point. I don't know if the bus already goes there, if doctor's offices, like where I work, if we need to maybe schedule our patients different, just knowing if they're riding the bus, that we could schedule them better.
Well, we definitely can gather some input on changes, definitely. The fixed route does go by the hospital and doctor's offices. The demand response has grown so much in demand.
Right.
That it's hard to accommodate every request.
Right.
And so, we've also went to JARC, which is the Job Access.
Right.
Extended our operating hours in the morning and the evenings to get people to work and get them home from work. So, it's put a lot of pressure on the, on the system. We've grown through using part-time employees.
Mm-hmm.
But those positions, those times in the mornings and nights when we have so many requests.
Right.
The demand response is just hard to get to everyone. So, we've really tried to stress and accommodate those riders on the fixed route. We just don't go in front of everybody's house on a daily basis on the fixed route. So, some people can't physically make it to the bus stop, or the weather's, you know, such that they can't walk in the wintertime when it's dark to the bus stop. So, but definitely we'll be looking at input on some options. What one thing we did do with our fixed route is you can call in and you say you live off the bus route. We can deviate off the fixed route to come back in the neighborhood. And we can allow so many deviations.
Per trip?
Per, per trip. So, we can keep on schedule. And that's one thing we did a couple of years ago to accommodate some people that ride it every once in a while, but don't live on the route. And to try to keep some of the demand off our demand response buses, try to keep everybody on the fixed route as much as we can.
Do you think there's enough demand that they need another bus? I mean, I don't know if the department, it's probably something the department can tell you more, or you can tell us.
Our ridership, you know, is, is up considerably over the last five years.
Right. And I think it's only going to continue to increase.
And it's with, I would agree with you 100%. And we've grown mostly with part-time drivers. And that's one thing, we're going through a lot of growing pains. Because we've grown so fast and so much, and especially we've grown on the demand response side. And that's the most costly service of the transit system. It's very expensive when you have one or two riders on a bus and you're picking them up at their house and taking them to a specific location. But that's unfortunately the biggest demand for growth is the demand response service. And another item is Bluegrass, which also operates a bus service in Franklin County. I think they've had some changes recently, too, with their bus service. So, that may have put some more demand on the city transit service. So, there's a couple of issues going on.
Yeah. Or even just getting a smaller van as well, minivan to help.
We have, I think, three or four minivans at this point where we can take, we don't take a big bus out to someone for a demand response. But what happens is, you know, if it's a wheelchair.
Right.
Not all of our small vans have wheelchair accessible. So, we try to juggle.
Right.
Our responses.
Right.
But those are some things definitely going forward. We need some input from the public. And we have public hearings that they, we will, we'll plan to have shortly.
Okay.
Where people can bring in if they have concerns or requests. Sounds like the transit, the trolley, one, maybe one of those where there might be some changes considered. We discussed during that, the winter period, maybe looking at changing that route is kind of like a pilot, rather than just do our tourist route, which we do in the summer. Maybe change that route in the wintertime to maybe look at some specific, bringing people downtown to eat lunch or something and get them back. And that's been a problem.
Or to do holiday and Christmas shopping. So.
Right. Great. Well, thank you, Jeff.
Yes, I'll throw in my two cents.
Okay.
Which is, I think the fact that we're bringing in a new transit head is a good opportunity to take a second look at the, or to take, to take a look at our route with some fresh eyes.
Right.
Because I suspect there's probably some changes that can be had there. And there's going to be some public forums on that as well. But, you know, that's something a new transit head could probably help us with a lot. Thank you.
All right. I'm good.
Okay, we exhausted that topic then? Okay, well, we're going to, any other old business? All right. How about new business? Okay, Doc, move on.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we can, if we can take this opportunity to talk about next month's meetings and meeting schedules, I guess first of all would be the, the meeting on the 15th, the 12:30 meeting. Do we?
You're talking about the October 15th?
Yes. Let's start, start with this one. Next Monday, the 12:30 meeting. If, if there's not an agenda or a topic that you want, then we'll go ahead and have our Louisville Hill public hearing. And, you know, you can attend that or however many can attend that without constituting a quorum or get, you know, getting yourself in a bind. Welcome to, welcome to Congress. But if we, if we don't need to have a regular meeting, then we'll just, the clerk, not schedule one for that. Also, in November.
Well, could we, could we?
I'm sorry.
Could we stay there for a second?
Sure.
Because I would like to attend that as well. If, if we have, if, if one more of us would like to go and we'll have a quorum presented at that, do we need, does that need to be an official meeting if we're going to, if, if we have any questions that we respond? I mean, if we're going to discuss that in any capacity?
You can attend, but I.
No discussion.
Be careful about discussing it.
Right.
This is to hear.
I won't be able to make it. I guess that was my deeper question. If all of us were going to be able to make it and wanted to make it, then it should be a meeting. But if not, then I'm happy to go be a fly on the wall.
This would be to, to just hear from citizens, right?
Yeah.
For us, and for us just to listen from there, we'd not be in, that'd be okay, wouldn't it, Mr. Moore?
Yes. I find that citizens often have, have questions, but I don't see why we couldn't just individually respond to them after the fact if anybody wants to, wants to ask questions. And staff can honestly answer most questions anybody has anyway. Okay, that's great.
Then if we were to look at the November calendar, we have several holidays in November. It's almost like an employer appreciation month in November. We have, we have the 6th, the 12th, 22nd, and 23rd. So, I don't know what, what's been done in the past.
There's nothing on the 5th.
Oh, but 12th is the, 12th is a work session scheduled. And that is a holiday. So, we can either attend.
It's Veterans Day.
Or Veterans Day.
It's the recognizing.
Yeah.
Right there.
Do we, no, no, no. Randy, do we, are we off that day or not? Monday, the 12th?
Go back there like nodding their heads rather vigorously.
Yeah, no problem. If it don't work, we have some holidays, you know. I mean, you know, Thursday's a holiday. It doesn't make any difference to us. So, yeah. So, by it, unless y'all just want to meet that day, we could have everybody come in and visit.
They want to.
I mean, I, I don't see why we couldn't hold our work session on the 9th. Just keep our work session on the 19th. Does that work?
On the 19th?
The next, the following Monday?
Either way, it's a special meeting no matter when you have it.
Even if we have it. We'll have it scheduled 12:30 for the 19th.
Yeah.
It's the 3rd.
Oh, on the 19th, yeah. Sorry.
That's fine. Let's just do the work session on the 19th and then do the voting on the 26th. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
When is?
19th, 26th.
26th.
Can I correct on that?
Yes. Yeah, 19th and 26th.
Okay.
That works for everybody? Great.
Thank you. That's all I have, my answer.
Now, we're down to the discussion items. The first one is the Louisville Bike Lane. Mr.
Well, it sounds like we've really just about covered it. I mean, we put the information out in the newspaper. In fact, we'll have, neat thing about the website, you can do a poll on there. It'll be as unscientific as the state journals. But it'll be a poll item on, on the new website. And we'll just publicize the, the public, public hearing. So, really, that's, that's about all we have to discuss on this. I guess for those, for those who don't know what we're talking about, the, this is a, the Sewer Department is doing some construction on Louisville Hill. It's going to have to tear up the asphalt. So, when we put the asphalt back, an office in the state has asked us, the Bike Pedestrian Office has asked us to consider bike lanes. It'd be one shared lane going down the hill. Bicycle share, share the roadway with cars, which they, they do now anyway. It'd be one lane going up the hill with a bike lane for uphill traffic, which I'd say is a pretty good job. You'd have to be a pretty good bike rider to get up that hill.
Did you, excuse me, did you say that this is a request from this Transportation Cabinet itself?
I believe the request is from Walk-Bike.
It's Walk-Bike.
And the decision rests with the Transportation Cabinet.
That's correct. And the design, right, the design, the design came from the Bike Pedestrian Office, Safety Office, or whatever. So, yeah, there's a lot of, lot of groups in here, but the actual request is from Walk-Bike.
Our local.
Right. And it moves, you know, Second Street up Louisville Hill there.
And to clarify our, our role in this, the ultimate decision obviously rests with the state as to whether or not to, to do this.
That's correct.
So, our role in this. And to clarify our, our role in this, the ultimate decision obviously rests with the state as to whether or not to, to do this.
That's correct.
So our role in this process is really just to gather the community's input and to share that with the state.
If, without the input, the state's gonna put it back the way it was. Or, or actually, Mr. Scouse's contractor has to put it back the way it was. Unless they get some other type of instruction from the State Highway Department. And I'm sure there are a few departments within the state that would have to sign off on this. This would just be a kind of a first step. But it is a time limited thing because it can only be closed for 10 weeks. Mr. Scouse can only have Louisville Hill closed for a maximum of 10 weeks, so they're working earnestly.
So would there be no formal action that the commission itself has to take?
I. I believe it would have to be because they're requesting a letter of support.
Yeah, that's why, so it'd be more than just the compilation of the comments made at the hearing on Monday.
Right, we would, we would, right, I'm sorry, we would request on the, the voting meeting some direction on which way to go on this. If we're to send Transportation a letter or not.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thanks.
Okay, ready, okay to move on? Next is the Cultural District Designation Application.
On behalf of the city, Downtown Frankfurt, Inc. has re-applied for the Cultural District certification through the Kentucky Arts Council. And last year, y'all passed a resolution saying that the city supported that. And we basically just wanted to reaffirm that support as we go forward. So that's, any questions on that? I have met with the Arts Council regarding last year's application. Apparently, we missed it by the narrowest of margins, so we're giving it another good shot. And hopefully we'll be successful and triumphant this time.
I think you will be. We're rooting for you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is the City Manager's Search Update.
Please, Mr. Donahue, give us some good news. We have some applications, please.
And all the old applicants withdrew.
We've got resumes and packets from approximately 70 candidates from 25 states.
Nice.
Everything from a one-page resume and a one-sentence letter of introduction to 20 to 30-page packet of references. And all kinds of other documents. So I guess. The field's been set. The next question is how do we, how do we attack that stack of applications? And how does the commission want to move forward with the process?
From my own personal understanding, I want, we discussed this previously about what we may want to, this commission may want to do. And I just want to state what I recall as seen. And just see if, if what I remember is what you all remember. And then, you know, if there's any deviation, we can discuss that. As I recall, we said we'd have the, send out the request for applications, which we have. And then we'd come back in that there'd be some screening process that would, by this commission. And that get it down to a certain number, as I recall. And then, at that point, wait till after the election. And then after the election, if we've got, we would have it down to a certain number. Then to see who was gonna be on the commission after the election. And then if there's gonna be other new members on the commission, then they would be involved as we begin to, to review that number. And then, so that the incoming commission, which may be all of you or what have you. But I mean, the incoming commission would then be farther along. So that they can make a final decision when they're seated as a commission. Is that, is that pretty much what y'all understood?
Pretty much, I think there are a couple of points that could be a little further clarified. We had talked about soliciting input from the public regarding what they would like to see in a city manager. So somehow or another, that needs to be facilitated. And I think plenty of time between now and the election to do that. And I, and. I wasn't under the impression that, that the commission would weed out any of the applicants.
No, I don't mean, I don't mean weed, weed them out. I mean, but they'd be, some, there'd be a process.
Right.
To limit, to get out of a certain number. And that's what I thought we'd be discussing today, yeah.
I guess I'll say, I don't, I don't feel the need to hit a particular number. But I would trust staff to, just at their discretion. Just weed out the applicants that aren't. That don't meet qualifications, that aren't qualified.
Who would be on that?
That's a good question.
And I think we need some clarification, like who, Mr. Donahue, maybe others? And maybe give them some kind of a round ball figure number. As to, from around 70? Down to somewhat manageable number?
I think that, I mean, and this is, I'm just throwing this number out there. I, I think that it would be nice to have it reduced, you know, to 35 or 40 at least, you know? So that, that's a little more manageable for when, you know, the commissioners and the member can start looking at it. But, you know, you never know, you might have 70 unbelievably qualified, perfect candidates there. And I don't know that that's actually gonna happen, but, you know, that's why I can understand what Commissioner Wilder's saying and that it's hard to point out a number. But, you know, if you can cut it down to half, that's a lot better than having to go through 70.
I mean, this is a tricky thing, because on one hand, we know that the next commission is gonna be at least a little bit different from this one. Because the five people sitting up here, only four are even running for office. So you know we're gonna have at least anywhere from one to five new folks sitting up here in a couple of months. And I think we all want to do that next commission regardless of whether or not we're on it. The. I think we're trying to do them a favor to an extent.
Right, not have to come in what we came into.
Right, and so on one hand, I mean, we wanna kind of get through as much as just the basic legwork as possible without cutting into any of the actual decision-making process. We don't wanna take any decision away from the next commission. But obviously by doing just this road legwork, by getting in the applications and the submissions and doing everything they would have to do anyway. We're kind of getting, getting ahead of the curve a little bit. You know, and I wish I had gone back and reviewed the results, because we were actually asked, what would you like to see in a commission or in a city manager candidate? We were asked that at the, at the recent forum we held. We had a candidate's forum and everybody answered that question. And I, I feel like we could even just go back to that and take notes in terms of seeing where the points of agreement are. Because I believe everybody said we want management experience. So for example, that could be a disqualifier.
Experience.
If somebody doesn't have any management experience, we can, we can take them out of the list. And I think that's something that no, no other candidates would object to. But really, frankly, my two cents would be that we. Gosh, we're running out of time, huh?
Yeah.
That you're really running out of time. I mean, I would like to have an opportunity to talk with the, to actually have a meeting, but include the other, include the other candidates. And just as a batch of eight people agree on some basic criteria and see if that basic criteria could be used to weed out any applicants. Off the top of my head, the only thing that I believe everybody agreed on, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we've got one other candidate here. I believe management experience was the only thing that everybody hit.
I think everyone also agreed on budget experience, but I don't know if everyone always includes. I recall most people saying budget experience of a large budget. I might be wrong.
I mean, we wanna do as much basic legwork as possible for the next commission so that they don't have to come in and waste their first month or two going through this stuff. But we also, I mean, don't wanna undercut. Although, having said that, the last two months of the year, November through half of December, because we all know that nothing happens the second half of December. Probably. I guess my, my advice would be to just weed out anybody who doesn't have management experience. And that's it. And then after the election, we will continue to meet as a commission, all of us. We'll continue to meet as a commission for another month and a half. And at that point, we can bring in whoever wins election. And whittle it down a lot more in, in November and hopefully make a decision in, in December that everybody agrees on, including the incoming commissioners.
Does the management experience need to be public sector or?
I don't think so. That's my two cents.
After having from just looked through them, I don't think you're gonna call but maybe 10 people, maybe 15 with that criteria. I mean, we've got.
Right, I figured.
Most of the candidates had some supervisory or management experience. When I say most, I mean probably just about all. It may have been managing a local cellphone store, it may have been managing the dally at Kroger, it may have been.
Managing another city.
It may have been managing a city with a 50 or 60 million dollar budget, exactly.
Having some public service, public, I think is important. Understand government. Having had some experience, that's my personal opinion. I think that you can, there is, there are certain things that city manager has to do to deal, particularly in this town, with the state government here. And to have an understanding of how government operates, I think is critical. Mr. May?
Just wanted to ask, do, do you know any of the candidates, whether or not they had ICMA certification?
Some did, yes. I can't really remember, I mean, it seems like I saw at least four or five that were ICMA certified.
I mean, to me, that's almost, at least we give them a second look. And then I was thinking too, there's so many ways to do this. And I've had the opportunity to do it a few times and we never did it the same way. I'm not saying one way's better. But it seemed like we always kind of, always wanted to get down to like sort of a standard personnel procedure, HR practices where we would narrow it down to the top three or four. So I don't know if we wanted to weed it down with this group. If you wanna get that involved and maybe get it down to the top six and then bring it, bring the other folks in, that's just, that's sort of a. And the reason I say that, it's not just to make it up a number, but it's thinking it's twice as many as what would be the final three. Or if you wanna make it a little bit more, but I think six is manageable. And having had to go back and hire other department heads that we've done over the years, sometimes the first group, we didn't. Find a person that worked out. So it's good to maybe, not just say we narrow it down to top three, because the top three, when we all look at that, might decide, yeah, we messed up here. We should have done, gone deeper. Just a thought. It's just something to think about, we have to decide tonight. But I think typically, when we hire employees, we typically go for the top three.
A lot of times, you try to limit your interviews to three or four. You know, when you get to that, that stage of the process. And there has to be some, you know, if you've got a stack of applications this big, there has to be some reasonable criteria that kind of pushes some into the probably not pile. And some into the pile of, yeah, you think there's a possibility they might work. I'm aware that three to six might be too few because the process is stretching out kind of one, so you may have some attrition.
That's true.
In those that apply, because they may have other opportunities become available to them in three or four months that we're going through this process. So by the time that, you know, we ran the ad in September and you're probably looking at the most. It'd be pretty ambitious to get somebody on board January 1st. I think February 1st might be more, more probable. That's not to say it couldn't be done. It's just to say that, like Commissioner Wilder said, not a lot goes on the last two weeks of December and.
Let's walk on your project management schedule a little bit, Randy.
They need some work. And if I could give up the health plan, I'd be glad to help.
No, I was just saying, I was telling the chief, I said that means you've got four more months.
Well, you know, the further we push it along into the January, February, whatever, you know, we're gonna be looking at the budget.
Yeah.
And really, I mean, you bring a new guy in cold, a new guy or gal in cold, you know? That's gonna be a tough time.
That's exactly my concern. Because I mean, we wanna do the next commission a service by, by not bringing in somebody, by not bringing in somebody cold when the budget process is starting. Or that's gonna be, that's just gonna be horribly inefficient and involve a lot of wasted time. We also don't wanna take the decision away from.
Yes, the commission had.
Are there any people who work for the city or department heads that would also like to, to join forces with you to maybe look at who to hire? Considering they're the ones who will be working with this person who's hired day in and day out?
I think we could put together a group that.
And maybe see if department heads or anyone the department head wants to bring up. Can kind of narrow it down maybe to the top 25 or so? And then come November 6th, go from there?
I think that's reasonable.
There's also, now, a couple of things here, but I think you'd be concerned about the timeframes. Because as Commissioner Wilder had indicated, and I've sort of got nods ahead, that maybe there's other concurrents, I guess, about trying to have some citizen input. Now, now, we're thinking now, just look at where we are right now, you know? And to get the word out that you wanna have citizen input would have to be somewhat, jump on it next there or two, I would say.
The website might help.
If you wanna try to talk about what kind of persons you want.
Sure.
Now, and so then, so that's one thing I think we need to consider. If you wanna have person, if you wanna have citizen input, that there should be some time of a timeframe when we wanna have that done. And who's gonna be responsible for advertising it? And where's it gonna be so we can pull that off? Now, the other thing, as you mentioned, I get it down to whatever you said with the department heads, I personally think that's a good idea. And that, then, but we also need to understand, see, then the election's gonna be here, how many days? 25, 30?
30.
30? By the time we have this, the public input, and then we have this group here, this committee you wanna have. To, to screen it down to say, you know, approximately whether, say, 15 or whatever the number may be, if it's gonna be a magic number or just around that area. Then by that time, the election, I'd think, would be here. And, and so then, after the election, then once back in, jump in and, and try to bring together whoever's gonna be on the commission, the new commission. And then start to get any more in-depth interviews. Fully understanding all along that the new commission may toss out everything we do.
Right, right.
But hopefully they understand this was an attempt to be helpful, yeah.
And I don't think we're limiting their choice too much by getting it down to 25 or 30.
Pardon me?
And I don't think we're taking any.
No, no, I don't think so.
Taking any choice away.
No, I think that'd be, appreciate that. Because that's a process, you know, that's not, that's not, yeah.
And that's processed traditionally, we've relied on staff to handle for us anyway. And the commission doesn't even take part in anyway, so that's.
Okay, we're pretty much, do you know what your role, what you're supposed to be on?
I'll talk to Mark about putting together a group. I'm actually, between the health plan and opening enrollment meetings and a week of vacation, coming into the next three to four weeks. It may be hard for me to be real involved in that process. I'd be glad to do it. One other point is the, the November and December holidays. I mean, it's just, even if we get to the point where we have some candidates identified. I guess if you want a job for Christmas, you'll come in, but, you know, if that's your Christmas wish, but, you know, that.
You know, maybe someone else in your department wants to step up and take on a role.
Yeah, and really thinking about it, I could go through 70 applications and assign them A, B, C or some sort of a score. And, or 1, 2, 3, and, and probably within a couple of hours, I could take them home and do that one night and have them back the next morning and ready to hand the folder to somebody else or. But I think we can get, we can get a group and we can come up with a strategy to get there.
Get seven people split it up by 10s.
Yeah, the bigger question is, are we gonna do public input? When are we gonna do public input? Do we need to wait for the public input before we do that screening process? Because if we don't wait, we're really not, if we, if we don't wait and hear it, do we really? really take it into consideration?
Personally, I think first move is you guys screen it, get it down, and to a certain workable numbers, and that's my personal opinion. The, but I think we should start looking at a time when we want to have public input. I think we should do that today. Start looking at, you know, when we could get that set up, how y'all feel about that?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that's just my personal opinion.
You put it on the agenda for the twenty-second, maybe?
And would Mr. Donahue be the one that advertises this? Or, I mean, and then when we have it, it's gonna be like here, where is it gonna be? It's gonna be here, you know, and who's gonna be here to document things, and?
I think it's a great time to use our new website, personally.
Yeah, but everybody, yes, right, it is.
I know everyone doesn't use the internet, but it's a great opportunity.
Yes, it is. So, do you want, do you, you want to look at your calendars now, and, or-
That's what I've got pulled up.
And see, how far down the road, you want to start having this public input?
I've got a couple, a couple of thoughts on that. I'd say that either the twenty-ninth of this month, or the fifth of November would work fine. Those are both Mondays. Mondays that we don't have commission meetings scheduled on. My sense is, I agree that we could rely on staff to go ahead and just screen out the obvious, screen the obvious applicants, without any input from us or from the public. I can, I can guarantee that the, that the eight commission candidates alone won't agree unanimously on, on all of these criteria, and we add more citizens to the mix, that becomes broader. So I think the value of public input is just to get the folks' opinions on the record, so that the folks who ultimately make the decision, the next commission, are just aware of what the public, what the public's feelings are. So as long as we collect that, I think we're okay.
And after, Commissioner, please. And I think after we go through some of it, we'll have a better understanding of, of what our pool is, so as we can, it will help us facilitate the conversation with the public of, okay, here's, here's sort of the qualifications that we're seeing that's coming in, what would you prefer, help drill it down a little more for, for the public when they come to do that. It begs me to think that it might be smarter if to maybe do that post-election, to have that public hearing. I mean, that way, we've had a chance to go through that initial process, we've got, we know who the next commission commissioners are gonna be, and they would be able to attend that, and get firsthand with that public, what the public is saying, specifically on that topic. Ideally, you know, all the candidates are out speaking with voters now, but specifically about that, that topic, you know, maybe second or third week of November or something to be able to do that before Thanksgiving.
Okay, so we're looking at maybe having a public suggestion here, is have it before twenty, the twenty-ninth has been thrown out, and then you're suggesting to wait until after the election?
After the sixth.
So what's, what's the feeling of it? I'm really indifferent on it.
I could agree with Michael if we don't wait too long after the election. Because we want the decision-making process to start really right after the election. The next commission needs to get on the ball and start screening out these applicants, because they're not gonna have a lot of time. So, I mean, why not just do something on the seventh or eighth?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, just throw something like on the Thursday night.
Pick a date, which one is?
Not the seventh, that's a January day.
What date?
You're not the seventh?
Well, that's an agenda day, you know?
Okay, cool.
I mean, we're compressing everything in November anyway, so, you know, if you put an agenda for the work session-
Right.
Uh-huh. And there won't be anything on the twelfth, it would just be the nineteenth.
Right, the evening of the eighth.
But the eighth would be, yeah, what she's saying, the eighth would be all right.
Eighth is fine, okay.
Let's do the eighth.
That's fine. And then the next commission can get that input, and hit the ground running. That's great.
Okay, we feel, we feel comfortable now with, you know, you know your charge?
I think Mark and I could get it out.
You want to-
I'm looking for him to look at, not his head just clear.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, all right.
See everything?
I think so.
Okay.
At five o'clock on the eighth. That, that's perfect. That doesn't take any decisions away from the next commission, and it gives them a leg up, in terms of trying to get somebody installed, early in the year.
And we'll try to get it close to twenty-five. It is hard to set a-
Right.
Hard, fast number, because if number twenty-six is, there's not much difference between twenty-five and twenty-six, and make it inclusive instead of that.
You might want to take it to twelve, I mean, who knows what you're gonna see?
Yeah.
But I trust you all, Judge, I trust you all can see that some folks just obviously wouldn't cut it, other folks obviously would. Just separate the wheat from the chaff, and we'll be fine.
Mr. Moore?
Ramona was concerned that the, is that December day?
Who does the candlelight tour?
November eighth and eleven.
Okay, that's what I was-
So you may not get many people here.
Unless we hold it downtown.
There you go, holding up the newsstand.
Yeah, in costume, dressed like chief.
There you go.
No, it'll be fourteenth century.
Does it start at five, or does it start after dark? Can we do it? Or is there a difference that time here? Five o'clock may be dark, after the time changes.
Let's just do it the thirteenth of November, that's a Tuesday, is that okay for everybody?
Now, what are you suggesting now?
That's the thirteenth of November, I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah. I just really want the next commission to have ample time to review this stuff and hire somebody, and hopefully, I'm still maybe even unrealistically shooting for a start date of January 1st. And we're-
I could do it the fifteenth.
And the, the further we push into November, the less likely, the less likely that's gonna be. What time does candlelight seriously kick off?
The car drives will start at six.
Uh-huh.
That evening, some of the merchants have things earlier than they're timed.
Why don't we do it a little earlier in the evening, I mean, can we do it at like three-thirty or four?
Let's say it's from four to six. Anybody from time and gear?
I am obligated.
Do a Saturday, or do a Saturday morning like we've done. I mean, not trying to draw everything out, but we had pretty good turnouts when we did the trash stuff.
I mean, I'll be bluntly honest, I don't think many people are gonna offer input on this. We've already announced we want to seek public input on this.
You're right.
We've also in the past announced we wanted to seek public input on the garbage program and on the bike lanes on the Royal Hill. When we made those other two announcements, I assume we all got some emails and phone calls, kind of right off the bat. This has been hanging out there just as long, and I haven't been contacted by a single person with their opinion on it. So I think it's more than we give the public the opportunity for this input, I don't think we need to plan for a big rush of people coming in here and clamoring about what they want to see in a city manager. I mean, that's not, that's not the kind of concrete decision that affects people's day-to-day lives the way streets and sanitation do. So, in that sense, we could just put out an open, we could just ask folks to solicit their input by calling City Hall, or sending an email.
Use the new website.
We don't need to have a meeting, it's easier for folks to call or write anyway, and use the website.
Yeah, I would try.
So we don't meet on the hay.
We can have it here.
Um, I mean, can we just run an ad in the paper? Or can we just ask the paper to run an article? That's an editorial decision.
Well, do, do we have a date?
I think I'm questioning whether that, we even need a date. I mean, it seems that if we could just make the, if, it's easier if we can just make the public aware of the fact that we're soliciting input, and ask them to either call City Hall or send an email to city manager.
Okay, all right, we comfortable with that? All right, let's move on.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Okay, no, the next item on the agenda is employee health plan update, and we, you got Mike?
I did my stay instead of walking backwards, or whatever. I'd rather go back to my chair, but, you know, you remember on September 10th, the brokers were here, and they talked about some options for the plan, and, you know, we understood the commission's direction was to leave things as it is, kind of a technical or problematic thing that's been brought to us, and I try not to overcomplicate this, but under all three of our health plans, we have embedded deductibles, which means that once one person in a family plan meets the single deductible, they've met, and they don't have any more out-of-pocket, the rest of the deductible shifts to the rest of the family. I don't believe it's part of healthcare reform, I believe it's part of the IRS regulations that affect health savings accounts. And our Plan One, high deductible plan, has health savings accounts attached to it, where the city puts money in an account for employees to help them meet the deductible. And so, under the federal guidelines for eligibility for health savings accounts, the minimal deductible for 2013 is twenty-five hundred instead of two thousand. Actually, it had been twenty-four hundred for 2012, but since we started our health plan year back in July of 2011, we skated through and didn't have to comply last year, we do have to comply for 2013. So only for that one plan, Health Plan One, the deductible would need to be, if we're gonna continue to offer employees HSAs, and if we're gonna continue to have embedded deductibles, which is to the employees' advantage, then we've got to raise the deductible twenty-five hundred, five thousand. It's not something I want to do, it's not something the brokers want to do, but we don't want to take the HSAs away from employees, and we don't want to take away the embedded deductible feature, because it's, it's consumer friendly, or it's employee friendly.
I don't, I don't, I mean, it's a regulation, I don't see that we have an option on it.
And they've cited IRS publication 696, 969, I'm sorry, I had to think about that. It's 969, and it's, I'd say it becomes a pretty technical discussion, and the options are pretty limited. And I'd say I think it's just the least, the least hurtful of all the options.
I think one thing that, if, we, I don't see us changing our opinion on HSAs here, but if, if we do do that, or we don't change our opinion, then I would like to see that when it's presented to employees, that it's cited, that that's why that's having to happen.
It will. You know, one thing that we did talk about in the staff meetings, whether we wanted to allocate more money to the HSA to sort of offset that, and I gathered some stats from the TPA Friday, and we have seventy-five employees on that plan through fifteen months. And we're only talking about twelve months being the standard plan year, but we're in that transition. Fifty-six of the seventy-five have not met the deductible yet. So putting more money in the HSAs, fifty-six of the seventy-five plan holders aren't getting to the deductible anyway, so you're not offsetting claims cost by doing that. But, you know, it's an option that we really have kind of struggled with a little bit, but we've got to comply with federal regulations, as Michael said, we just don't have a lot of options there.
And how many folks have hit the deductible?
Seventy-five employees have planned one.
Right, and you said fifty odd had-
Fifty-six have not met the deductible. Nineteen have met the deductible.
Okay. Um, I mean, and, and, I just want this, but that, that extra five hundred dollars applied to those nineteen folks, that's money that we're being forced to save, right?
Well, only if they exceed the deductible. If they don't go over the deductible, you're not-
Assuming that those, assuming that that's the, that's the trend.
For that non-trad, yes, yes.
So I would, I mean, I don't think, I can't imagine any of us are happy about this. And I can't imagine why the IRS even cares, but that's-
The HSAs have such strong tax advantages, I think, that they've set up all these criteria, you can't have a flexible spending account if you've got one. It's, like I said, it really gets into tax matters more. I think the tax discussion is driving it more than the healthcare-
Sure.
-model driving the discussion.
Sure. Um, well, I would at least be in favor of ta, of, of taking, actually, where is this? The almost, you know, ten thousand, it's not a lot of money, taking the almost ten thousand dollars that we're ostensibly, you know, saving.
If nineteen exceeded the deductible next year.
And distributing that, you know, evenly into the, into all the HSAs. I mean, just to ease the bite a little bit, but, one thing, one thing else, I think we can all agree, we don't want to take away the HSA option, and we don't want to take away the embedded deductibles.
Right.
So it is what it is. I mean, if, if you, if you could think of any reasonable way to ease, ease that sting for employees, that-
I mean, I really would need some direction from you guys to change anything, I think. I mean, it's, the problem with throwing money at the HSAs is it may be a totally different nineteen people next year.
Yeah, of course.
That meet the deductibles, and you don't know if it's gonna be on the single plans that are meeting it, or the, the family plans that are meeting it.
Sure.
And, you know, it just gets, it becomes a sticky mathematician's problem figuring out how to do it where it's fair. We're, you know, our HSAs are, or at least I'm being assured, that they're, we're giving employees, which is five hundred for a single, and one thousand for a family plan, are in-line, or maybe on the, on the upper end of what other employers are doing. So I think we're doing pretty good by the HSA. You know, the good-
Well, clearly, we're doing good by the IRS's, and it's too good. We need to cut back.
You know, the, the good thing is that after 2011, we've got options. So if an employee is not comfortable taking on that additional five hundred dollars or one thousand deductible at the family level, then we have Plan Two and Plan Three for them to look at.
Sure.
Because we really do have a pretty wide gamut of options. And it's, and really, when you look at the employees' maximum exposure, including the premium, there's not that much difference in plans. It's just a matter of whether you want to pay it all upfront in premiums and not get any of it back, or you want to run with a lower premium and absorb some of the risk, and maybe save that money. But, you know, it's, that's just the way high deductible, HSA plans work.
Is there a decision for us to make here?
I think the decision is, don't do the embedded, keep our embedded deductibles, keep our HSAs, raise the deductible, I think we've got to do. Now, the question is, do you want to distribute any more money in HSAs or not? If it's a little bit, it can probably be absorbed in the budget that's out there, because some of it is a trade-off on claims probably. But if it's a whole lot, then, you know, it might have to, we might have to get somebody to look at it and see if it needs to, to go into a budget amendment, that we've got hanging out there anyway.
Michael's our resident insurance expert.
I'm curious, though. Right.
Um, I don't, I think just keeping our contribution the way it is would be what I would recommend. You know, the reality is, is that healthcare costs are going up for individuals and employers, and it stinks, but I think we, we've all probably experienced it with our own personal insurance plans. I can recall when we first set this up, that I got quite a few calls from employees who were not on the HSA, who were not too thrilled about us giving five hundred dollars into those accounts. So I think, you know, we, we only risk creating more discontent by doing it than if we just maintain it and, and point to the fact that this isn't our decision, the decision that we wanted was to keep it the same, but it's a federal government decision that we have to abide by.
Yeah, like I said, I just think a big thing is that there are choices there. You can buy it down, buy your deductible down by moving to one of the other plans. And, you know, we're pretty close to one-third, one-third, one-third on distribution, so I think it's great that we're offering employees options.
I mean, that's the deeper point for me. It wouldn't make any sense for us to take away the HSA, because that just takes that choice away from employees. If there are employees who would prefer that we take away the HSA instead of increase the deductible by five hundred dollars, then they have the option to take it away from themselves, and go to, go to another plan, so.
And the HSA shares the risk with the insured more than the city assuming the risk.
Sure.
So, I mean, that's why you would argue that, well, because the city on the other end is not having to assume that risk, that's why we can afford to put five hundred dollars versus-
Exactly.
-the other insurance options.
Oh, the HSA's-
And that's why you want to keep an HSA, because in the long run, that's what's gonna lower your overall cost of insurance.
So I'll take it, march on, and-
So, be a law.
Comply with the law. So I'll take it, march on and comply with the law.
Yeah.
Explain it to employees to the best of our, our ability, and, and make sure they understand all the options are available to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay.
Out of air of bad news, right?
That is disappointing.
Sign on the door.
The next, the next item is, says local human rights commission.
Is that on the...
Yep.
We're all looking at it. I think that staff had something that they had found that they wanted to discuss on this topic, I'm not mistaken.
If I can go ahead and go over it. There was, the city of Frankfurt has created a human rights commission previously, back in nineteen sixty-nine, the city of Frankfurt created a human rights commission by ordinance. And then by ordinance, in nineteen seventy, the human rights commission was amended so that it contained one half member, contained ten members, one half from the county and one half from the city. And that was in nineteen seventy, by ordinance number twenty-seven, nineteen seventy.
Can I interject for a quick? Is that a, does that mean, since it does include county, I mean, is it just city or does it include fiscal court as well?
It includes, in the, in the ordinance that was passed in nineteen seventy, the ten members consisted of a mayor and the county judge, and then four members appointed by the city and four members appointed by the county. But that was in nineteen seventy. Some, somewhere between nineteen seventy and today, the human rights commission, the ordinance was repealed. And it appears that it would have been repealed sometime between nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and four.
It's this guy's time period, right?
And we have not been able to find out exact, you know, determine exactly why, but whenever you do your five-year ordinance review that's required by statute...
That's what it was, we took off old ordinances.
You delete old ordinances that are redundant with, with statutes. And it's, it's an assumption, but I think it's a fairly safe assumption, that what happened is the ordinance concerning the human rights commission was determined to be redundant with the, with the state human rights commission, and so the ordinance was repealed.
Do we know if the county repealed their ordinance part of it as well?
I don't know at this point.
Good question.
That's a good question, though.
What was the question?
The question was, since it was a joint commission between the city and the county, did the county, because we repealed ours roughly after nineteen ninety-eight, did the county also repeal theirs, or is there still live on the book?
Yeah, thank you. And we can, we can check into that. I would say, you know, if you all do want to move forward to create the human rights commission, you would have to pass a new ordinance.
Sure. Although we, we certainly do have a model that we can...
It's a good starting work off of.
And the statutory language that's used in this nineteen seventy ordinance is almost identical to the language of the, of the current Kentucky statute, so it might require a minor tweak, but that's about it.
Well, my, my two cents would be to check with the county to see if their ordinance is still live. And I, you know, I know we've been having a kind of hard time feeling the county out in terms of whether or not they would like to work with us on this. And that's a hard discussion to start having in a void where it, you know, where there's nothing, I mean, when it's just an idea, but now that we actually have a, something solid that everybody can look at and see, get some idea of how it would work or how it could work on a, on a starting point for a discussion, and I, I think we could share this, if the county doesn't already have this live, we could share this with them.
Yeah.
And just ask for their, their input. I'm sure the county attorney and the judge and the magistrate should have something to say about this, but it'd be a lot easier for them to sound off on a document than a vague idea.
And there might be a way to find out what kind of budget the human rights commission had during the time period that it existed, because if you have an active human rights commission, I think that you would want to take that into consideration in the budget because there's an, there's a chance that you would have hearings and things like that, and whenever you have hearings, you have hearing officers that you have to pay, similar to the legal fees that have been incurred in the ethics commission hearings.
So you'll check that?
Give me some weekend reading material.
Right.
Little history lesson.
Okay. Is there any more comments to make on that item?
No, but could we, could, Chief, do you mind to fill out the county to see if, and just give us a...
No, no. Okay. We'll move along here. The next item was a closed session, so I'll need someone to, Mr. May?
If we go into closed session for carry six one eight, ten sub one, Sabee, for pending litigation.
Mr. Head?
I'll second.
Mr. Head?
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
May Brown?
Yes, and we're now going to closed session.
Thing is, there's a, there's a hangover. When the show goes down, they give this ordinance to everybody, five years. Maybe the company that does that for us.
I keep it here all the way, I saw when you, you sent me an email. Yeah. I'll probably have to...
I think it's a...
Yeah.
I get off the back, I have a big...
You put a bunch of stuff...
Actually, so...
They turned out the one that's getting out of the city street.
I just wondered, I said, well, I still think we should perhaps get it up. Actually, I really did believe in it. But it was when they backed it.
Oh, right.
Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
About the inside, but that wasn't very big.
Yeah.
You guys might say something else.
You know what I've been reading, and you'll appreciate this, it's the old Frankfurt brand, oh, yeah. I've read, yeah, and I read the, the nineteen-year-old lady down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what does that mean, fishing off of...
No, no, this is the criminal aspect of the case. So, now it's going to prosecute, it's for him to defend, those criminal charges.
They're so mean, they just...
Riverbunner, you got fifty million.
He was, he was...
They burned him in there.
He looks at the evidence. And if he feels, you know, if he wants to make a decision on whether to proceed or not by some, you know, circumstances, or if he feels like it's obvious that he's up for grabs. He has to...
But it will continue, that will make it, you know, at this point.
It's going back to the first term, he's got a decision.